Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, March 19, 2024 Board of Education meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to reopen the meeting. We're probably moving second to reconvene. All those favor stated aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same right. Motion carried. Mr. Trent, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Ms. Dowling.
Here.
Ms. Fieleck.
Here.
Ms. Franco-Harman.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Kippen's walls. Dr. Kippen's walls.
Present.
Ms. Luckard, turn again.
Here.
Ms. Sina.
Present.
Mr. Todd.
Here.
Thank you, nine members present have a call.
Please rise as we salute the flag. Question is. Thank you. We'll now have our MTSD student report. Ms. Robb.
Good evening, Board of Education in Montgomery community. This March has been a pleasant month for the students of Montgomery High School. This month marks Women's History Month, an important month of recognition of the contributions women have made to history and the importance of their equal role in our society. Students have been recognizing this all throughout the month. This month also recognizes many religious holidays and holy seasons like Ramadan, Lent, and Easter. The students of Montgomery are wishing a peaceful and reflective season for all who participate or celebrate this month. In honorable Down syndrome day of March 21st, students and staff at MHS will be participating in Rock for Sox Day. On this day, students and staff are encouraged to wear crazier fun socks to represent the celebration of all our unique differences. Our senior class trip to Disney earlier this month was a stunning success, and on the notice of success, the MHS Red Cross Club hosted another very successful annual blood drive today. The blood drive was hosted and organized by students in the club and facilitated by some amazing experts from the Red Cross. At the start of this month, the Montgomery Boys Basketball Team took home the Central Jersey G4 championship, marking Coach Chris Grundy's 300th career win. Recently, MHS had the honor of hosting the first Mid-Atlantic Montgomery District Robotics Competition. MHS's robotics team, 1403, took home the championship. And as the spring athletic season begins, we are wishing all of our student athletes the best of luck with their upcoming seasons. The Montgomery community is invited to attend the MHS Drama Department's rendition of the Addams Family. Shows are in the Montgomery Performing Arts Center on Friday, March 22nd at 7:00 p.m., Saturday, March 23rd at 2:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m. with a special in-school preview assembly for students. This event is set to be a gasoline exciting one for all. Earlier this month, juniors had the wonderful opportunity to take the NJGPA, providing students in other grades with two special testing scheduled days on the 11th and the 12th. Students are looking forward to the upcoming homework pre-break on March 29th through February 3rd. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Robb. We'll now have the superintendent's report and presentations.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for all coming out. There are six presentations tonight, so we're going to get started. Our first presentation, I'm going to ask Mr. Corey Delgado to come up, and he is going to present to us our National Merit Scholar finalist. Thank you, Mr. Delgado.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, hello, hello. What a nice honor it is for me to get up here tonight and recognize and introduce you to the 10 Montgomery High School seniors who have earned this very prestigious recognition of being National Merit Scholars. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the award, then I'll bring them up, and maybe we'll get some photos. So, the National Merit Scholarship Program is an annual academic competition among high school students across the nation, and this recognition for national scholarships has been going on since 1955. Before I bring the kids up, and to truly appreciate this accomplishment, let me share with you a little bit about their journey to get to where they are tonight. They each started as one of 1.3 million high school senior candidates from over 22,000 high schools across the country who entered the program. They successfully met the scoring criteria on the PSAT and the NMSQT tests as juniors, and that was just their initial screening. They continued to meet the high standards of the academic performance criteria through their junior and senior years. They completed an extensive NMSC application. They then met the prerequisite scores on the SAT or ACT, only to still be asked to provide additional documentation, including a submission of a personal essay. Does that all sound familiar? Yeah, that does. That's why they look a little tired to me. After all that, they made it to the top 1% of that 1.3 million, the top 1%. So, just phenomenal, something we should all regard. As I use the word prestige, I think that means more than the money, but they are eligible for some significant scholarships as well. So I'm going to bring them up. I think maybe Ms. McLaughlin or Mr. Todd want to join us, and we'll take a picture. So as I call each student up, maybe just we'll line up over here. Does that sound good? Okay, excellent. Okay, I think all 10 are here tonight, which is amazing. They also have wonderful attendance, although that's not a requirement for National Merit Scholars. So we'll hold our applause to the end. Carthick, Gora Bethune, Sarah Breisinger, Penny Lu, Ishan Munjikar, Rena Shao, Arjun Sharma, Sarthik Talukdar, Elliot Tonalski, Eric Xin, and Andrea Zhang. Those are your 2024 National Merit Scholars. Parents, if you want to come up and get a photo, please do. I know, I think Ms. Preston was here.
They already received their certificates.
Yes, so we already gave them their certificates about a month ago when we received them, so just pretend they have a really nice shiny certificate.
I think we have to get it.
Mr. Delgado.
Everyone look down at Ms. Preston. That's one more. I saw a lot of them. Congratulations.
We understand it's a school night, if you would like to all leave right now. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you, everyone. Our next presentation is from our auditing firm, Suppley Cooney, Mr. Eric Zimmerman. Welcome, Eric. Thank you for coming out.
Thanks for having me. Just when I thought everyone was here to see my presentation. Yeah, so thanks for the introduction again. I'm Eric Zimmerman from the audit firm Suppley Cooney Company, and we were responsible for the fiscal year 2023 Annual Audit. Our job is to issue an opinion on your financial statements. Okay, so whether they're free from material in the statement and in conformance with rules and regulations of the state of New Jersey. I'm pleased to announce that we've issued an unmodified opinion, so that's the clean opinion, it's the best opinion that you can get. Basically, what that means is that your financial statements can be relied upon by the various users that would need them. As part of our audit package, you should have received two reports. Okay, so one is the bigger report of the two, that's the ACTF, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And what comprises this report is basically all the financial statements, those opinions that I just spoke of, and the various notes, the required note disclosures that are required to be put into the report. I like to, you know, let the board know that within that ACTF report, probably the most significant schedule that you can look at is Exhibit C1. And, you know, just as your reference, it starts on page 86. And this is the budgetary analysis from the year of the district. So it goes through the revenues, your budget appropriations, and then the surplus at the end of the year, and the various components that make up that total surplus. So this would be your capital reserve, maintenance reserve, excess surplus that's forced to equate to budget, and your undesignated fund amounts. While I'm on the topic, you know, I'd like to say that the district is in good financial health. And kind of to define that a little further, what we like to see is that you're regenerating more back in than what's being utilized to balance your budget each year. If this wasn't the case, you know, you'd be on a downward trend, and then you'd be having much harder budget conversations for future budgets. All right, so your things are looking up again as you're regenerating in what's being used. So that covers the opinions and the financial statements. The last thing that I want to talk about is the other report of the two. It's a smaller one. This is the AMR report, the Auditor's Management Report. And what this is, the state of New Jersey, the Department of Education requires us as auditors to look at various departments and components of the district. So this would be things like the Treasury's reports, and ASSA payroll, school, the food service account. And they guide our audit in compliance and internal control, things that we have to look at. And if we find issues with those items, we're required to put recommendations into your report. Which leads me to the recommendation that is in the report that's required to be read aloud tonight. And that recommendation is 2023-001, that appropriate action be taken to ensure that net cash resources of the food service account do not exceed three months' average expenditures. So that's a lot to take in. So what does that basically mean? This is specific to the food service account, and there's a distinct calculation that takes place. Basically, it takes your net cash resources at the end of the year, and it compares them to three months' average operating expenditures of the food service account. If your net cash resources exceeds the operating expenditures of three months at an average, you have a recommendation in the report. So as our audit firm, you know, we have about 50 districts that we do in the state of New Jersey, this is not a problem just for Montgomery. This is a big problem across the state of New Jersey. What has happened is from the, a lot of, like the COVID going back, I know everyone was tired hearing about it. Since then, a lot of funds have been dumped onto our districts into the food service account. They have to stay there, they have to be used for food service-related activities, and it's easier said than done. So, you know, kind of think it's unfair, but overall, if you have to have a recommendation in your report, this is the one to have. There's way worse problems that you could have that would be, you know, require more things to look at. So this does require a corrective action plan, like I said, and, you know, the one thing that you want to consider when you're thinking about the corrective action plan is that the monies that came in, this kind of one-time revenues that were coming in from the state and federal government, it is just that, it's one time, or two times, not to say, I'm not the one to say that it's not going to continue for year after year, but it doesn't look like that's the case. So you don't want to go ahead and spend it on salaries, right? Because those are operating recurring costs. Once this problem is corrected, you may not have the regular recurring revenue stream to cover these expenditures year after year. So just consider that. We're kind of advising our clients to look at capital needs in the food service area and address those needs with this excess funds that the state is saying that you have. But that's the recommendation. So with that, you know, that concludes what I have for the audit. I will take, you know, any questions anyone may have on the audit, the financial statements, or the recommendation that's in the report.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
I have one.
Let's begin.
Probably not necessarily for you, it may be for Ms. Franklin. Do we have any ideas for how to utilize those excess funds?
That'd be for Mr. Trent.
Mr. Trent, sorry.
We do, we have them. We've been doing some upgrades, using it for repairs.
On like equipment?
Yeah, on equipment, yep, in the different kitchens.
Across all schools.
Across all schools, yes. Some are in better shape than others. No, so Nick, there is a plan, all right? We haven't worked it out yet.
One question.
Sure.
So I would like you to maybe educate the board about the larger balance of the liability that's being allocated to us by the state, so just so they know what the number represents. I know it's a new accounting standard, but then when you look at the balance sheet, it kind of distorts the data. It almost looks like our cash flow is not sufficient to cover the liability. So maybe you can give us a background of what it represents.
And just to clarify, are you talking about the GASB 68?
Yes.
Yeah, so again, this has kind of caused the delay in our audit process for the last five, six years now, and it's kind of gotten a little worse and worse. We've been waiting for the state to release these numbers for GASB 68, which is your pension liability, and GASB 75, which is your OPEB liability, that's other post-employment benefits, so retiree health benefits, basically, in a nutshell. These numbers are released from the state, and then they get audited by, right now they're being audited by KPMG, and we have to get updated numbers each year to put into the audit report. Kind of going back a little bit as to why I guided you to that Exhibit C1 schedule, that's a budgetary schedule. So these liabilities for these two GASB pronouncements are not reflected in there. All right, this is a liability that we had to pick up on a GAAP basis. So they're under A schedules at the front of the financial statements. A lot of our districts with the liability put in, they're showing deficit fund balances. And to your point, this number that we're getting is having significant swings year to year after year, where one year there'll be a huge benefit, which is a plus to surplus, and then the next year, the liability increases by a huge amount, and then driving that surplus back down. We don't like to put too much attention onto that because, again, it's on the GAAP basis, and really for the decision-making that the board has to make as far as next year's budget, fiscal year 25's budget, this is unrelated to it. Okay? It's a formality, we have to adhere to the standard, and we wait for those numbers to come out, and we apply limited procedures for them, but again, they're audited by another independent audit firm, and then we insert those numbers into your report.
Any other questions from board members? Very nice. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Eric. As part of the New Jersey Department of Education requirements to submit the student safety data system report information, tonight I will be reporting out on Report Period 1 for the 23-24 school year. At Montgomery High School, there were 25 total incidents reported, with the majority reported under the category of HIV alleged. Other incidents included fighting and substances. At Upper Middle School, there were 23 total incidents reported, with most incidents falling under the category of both HIV alleged and fighting. At Lower Middle School, there were 31 total incidents reported, with the majority reported under the category of HIV alleged. At Village Elementary School, there were six total incidents reported, all reported under the category of HIV alleged. At Orchard Hill Elementary School, there was one incident reported, which was reported under the category of HIV alleged. So that is the report for our first half of the year, Period 1 for the SSPS. Now I would like to call up Ms. Stacy Young to do our harassment intimidation, bullying, investigations, trainings, and programs presentation.
Hi, everyone, good evening. Stacy Young, Director of Equity, Data, Accountability, and Addition to the District Anti-Bullying Court Leader. Tonight I'm here to share out on our Period 1 HIV Investigations, Trainings, and Programs, Period 1 being September to December 2023. In this presentation, I'll be giving a brief overview of the definition of HIV. We'll look at some data with our investigations, trainings, and programs. I'll talk about how to report and where to get additional information. So beginning first with the definition of HIV according to the state of New Jersey, it can be a gesture, it can be a written, verbal, or physical act, or an electronic communication, it can be a single incident, it can be a series of incidents, as long as it is reasonably perceived as being motivated by an actual or perceived characteristic. And you can see a list of characteristics there, such as race, color, religion, gender, street, et cetera. In addition to that, it needs to take place either on school property, a school-sponsored function on a school bus, or off of school grounds. It needs to substantially disrupt or interfere with the orderly operations of the school or the rights of other students. And in addition to that, a reasonable person should know under the circumstances that the act will have one of the following effects, at least one. That it will physically or emotionally harm a student or damage to student's property, that it will place a student in reasonable fear of physical or emotional harm, that it has the effect of insulting or demeaning any student or group of school students, or that it creates a hostile educational environment for the student. All of our schools are equipped with anti-bullying specialists who are our school counselors. You can see a list of them on the right-hand side. Our ABSs are the ones who conduct the investigations. They're also the chairs of our school safety and climate teams, and they do get trained at least twice annually. Taking a look at that at our Period 1 investigations, again, this is the first half of the school year, you can see our schools on the left-hand side. In the center there are the number of alleged or recorded incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and to the right are the ones that were actually founded or affirmed as incidents of HIB. So you can see there that out of 47 investigations that we held in that four-month period, 12 were affirmed to be HIB. Our Period 1 training, Training is staff-facing work, so you can see here on, again, the left, all of our buildings, to the right, the number of trainings that were offered to staff, and that might be the entire staff, that might be a subset of staff, like the counselors or CST, for example. And here just a few of the different trainings. I do want to highlight that our administrative team is trained by the board attorney annually in addition to attending the Summer Center County Superintendent's Association annual law training in the summer as well. Programs is student-facing work, again, our schools on the left, to the right you can see the number of programs that were offered to our students in each building. That might be a whole school assembly, that might be our counselors pushing into classrooms and doing lessons. That can look a variety of different ways, which is why you see a series of different numbers for each building. Here are just a few examples, knowing that our principals were here just last month sharing all of the amazing work that's happening in our school, so you can just take a look here at some of the examples that I wanted to highlight. In terms of who can report, really anybody can report. Any student, parent, staff member, or community member can report an allegation of HIB. Students, parents, and community members do get the choice to report anonymously should they want to. Staff members, as mandated, reporters do not have that choice, they cannot report anonymously. The report can be verbal, you can just share it with any staff member, or it can be written in an email, for example, to any staff member, or you can use our reporting platform, which is right on the district website, if you go to the HIB page, you'll see a tab that says "How to Report," that will take you to our reporting platform, HIBster. And finally, if you're looking for additional information, I encourage you to visit the HIB tab on our district website. There are a couple of new resources that I wanted to highlight, the first of which is a video presentation that is less than 10 minutes, that is basically HIB 101. If you don't want to watch the presentation and listen to my voice, I encourage you not to. You can just download the PDF and read it. There's also a new FAQ page, frequently asked questions, and we're adding to that all the time as we get them. And then the NVO resource, the HIB Parent Guidelines, is also available on our website. That's it. I'm really happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you. I actually have two quick questions totally. For Period 1, do you see any trends, either good or bad, in HIV events?
Yeah, I mean, you know, our schools are like microcosms of society, so we often see whatever's happening in the world around us sometimes gets reflected in our schools. In Period 1, the protected categories that we saw most often were race, gender, identity, and expression.
Yeah, second question, is there any, I guess for lack of a better term, statute of limitations for reporting HIV incidents?
I'm looking at the attorney.
There's no statute of limitations on when you can report it. However, I would say that if it's been a significant period of time from what happened, it likely is going to impact not only the ability to complete the investigation, but if it took that long to report it, what was the impact if it only came up like so much later?
Any other questions from board members?
Thank you, Dr. Gavil, for your report. I'm a vote every year. Can you please talk to the board and the persons in the audience a little bit about the type of support or restorative supports that are in place for both alleged offenders and victims that are involved with HIB cases, whether founded or not?
Sure. Thank you. Certainly, our counselors are our biggest resource in our schools. It works out well that there are anti-bullying specialists, they may not feel that way, but it works out well that there are anti-bullying specialists because they are our champions for the students, and they're able to offer that one-on-one counseling and support as often as a student needs it. That's definitely one of our primary resources for supporting our students.
And I've asked this question three previous times, but I'll ask it again. I know when my children attended the schools here, I found the parent workshop around HIB and its processes and tenets extremely powerful. So is your department coordinating with the schools at all, the superintendent, director of counseling and wellness, or any entity within the school district on reactivating those workshops, even if it's facilitated virtually?
That's a great question. My understanding, based on historical knowledge, is that when we previously held those sessions, they have been not well-attended. So our strategy was to create a video that parents could visit at any point on the website. And so, you know, what we have is our you know, what we have is our principals and our ABSs sharing out that video as a resource for parents if they need additional information.
That would be great. Thank you.
That's not up yet, right?
Oh, it's up.
It's up.
Yeah, it's there.
Is there a way to...
I just did it like a month or two ago.
Okay, that's very recent.
It's very recent, yeah.
Is there a way that you can track, have you been able to see how many times it's been viewed? That's a great question. I can ask tech about that.
Also, one more question. That's fantastic. Thank you that the video is out. Has there been any awareness, sure that it's up there, or would that be, I don't know, an idea that we can send out an email to families, you know, just reminding them that it's up and to take a look?
We can absolutely. We figure out a way to do that, tech.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Erin Dunn, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Once again, I'd like to bring up Mr. Cory Delgado for our MHS Portrait of a Graduate presentation.
So I watched the video. It's really good. And I think just, and this is not trying to be funny, but as a principal, you are often having, back in my principal days, you're often having, trying to have conversations to clarify the legislation as it relates to what might be considered typical adolescent behavior. And that can be a tough conversation. So that's a great resource for principals to reference, for parents to go and watch, maybe before, during, or after a HIB investigation. So I thought Stacy did a great job putting that together, super concise and clear. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. So I'm here to talk about Portrait of a Montgomery High School Graduate, and really just focus on the academic performance and the post-secondary trends for the class of 2023. In my new role, this has been my favorite project so far. This has been just fascinating, following the trends, digging into the data. I have a wonderful support team in the counseling office that I want to recognize here, just in case they watch this on video, because they really helped me put together a lot of these data slides. And that's Ms. Diane Tallerick, Ms. Allison Melhorn, and Ms. Sarah Deey. They're fantastic. And together, we sit and we just go down these rabbit holes and just try to find more and keep digging and digging and digging. So here's some information and more to come. So this is a slide that was created in the last strategic planning process. I just wanted to put it up there because I thought it was a great brand that we were using during that last strategic planning process. And the Portrait of a Graduate motto has stuck with us. So as we go into our next strategic planning phase, just something to think about when it comes to branding. Here's a quick snapshot of our class of 2023. You can see we had 409 graduates. Of the 409 graduates, 96% went on to continue their education after high school. 88% of the 96% went on to four-year colleges. And then we had many going on to two-year and three-year as well. So while our students are with us, they are assembling some essential academic criteria. They accumulate this for their academic portfolio. It includes transcripts and test scores. And many of our students choose to challenge themselves in the role of AP courses. AP courses, here's a look at our 21 AP courses that we offer. It's a nice array of opportunities for our students. Just going to let that sit there for a moment. Many of our students who are enrolled in the AP courses choose to take the complimentary standardized test in spring. It goes with the course. And here's a look at how they did. The most widely administered test that we give is biology, followed by microeconomics, macroeconomics, and calculus. And if you look here at the slide, the green lines represent Montgomery High School, yellow, New Jersey, and blue, the rest of the world. And you can see those green lines standing tall. A lot to be proud of there. Once again, those green lines are standing tall, representing how well the Montgomery High School students are doing. Just to give you an idea, we administered 1,463 AP tests last year. I'm going to say that again. 409 graduates. Now, we know juniors will also be taking these exams, but 409 graduates, 1,463 AP tests administered next year, last year. Okay, moving on to what is, I would say, the more popular of the college readiness assessments that most of our students choose to take, the SAT. Not just more popular for our students, but around the country, especially on the coasts, although SAT and ACT are still both widely accepted by most colleges. Here's how our students did. Again, this is the class of 2023. You can see the green lines once again represent Montgomery High School, the yellow bars are New Jersey, and the blue is everyone else. So if you look at this from a composite standpoint, Montgomery High School student is doing better than almost 250 points better than the rest of the state and the country. Again, something to be very proud of. Here's a look at a five-year look. So you can see Montgomery High School making gradual improvements. I'm going to try not to talk about the pandemic a lot tonight until I do that, you know. But you do remember back in 2021, students couldn't sit for tests, that physically couldn't sit for the test. We still found a way to get them in. And you'll see, unfortunately, on the blue line, the rest of the country is experiencing a slight dip. Just to give you an idea, last year, we had 350 students take the SAT. ACT is, again, another college readiness test, not as popular with the Montgomery High School students. Only 60 students took the ACT out of the class of 2023. Here's how they did. And the ACT is out of 36 points. You can see, again, the green bars representing Montgomery High School students, the blue bars, New Jersey, and the blue is national. We love seeing those green bars stand tall. Here's another table view. Again, we went back five years to take a look. You'll see it's staying pretty consistent. We talked a little bit earlier about the National Mellon Scholars in the class of 2023. They had 14 finalists. Fantastic. Again, a lot to be proud of here. And, you know, a lot of our students are accumulating these achievements, these accomplishments, this data for their student profiles to get ready. As you saw, 96% of our students get ready to apply to colleges. This has been fascinating to watch, this stuff. So the trends that we are seeing across the country when it comes to the admissions game, and I'm using the term "game" literally, it really has become a bit of a game. It is incredibly unpredictable right now as to the college acceptance and application review process. When it started at the bottom there, the COVID effect does, it continues on. And that is what leads to the unpredictability that we are experiencing right now. Demonstrated interest is something that we are seeing colleges look favorably upon, especially as they have moved into test optional. We're looking for some supplemental data points. Some of those things might be how many clicks you had on their website, how many times you visited their campus, how early you decided to apply to their school. We're seeing an increase in international applicants, an increase in defers and waitlists. That's because of the increase in applications. So if you move your way up to the Common App and Test Optional phenomenon that we are experiencing, that has probably been the biggest reason that we are seeing changes in the acceptance rates. So all schools went test optional in 2021, when kids could not physically sit for the test, and most have remained test optional. They've been collecting about three years' worth of data that they will use. We expect this spring to make decisions for next fall, whether or not they're going to go back to test mandatory. We are anticipating most of them, or many of them, will. They don't necessarily want to, but they will. We've had 80 colleges come and visit Montgomery High School, and we chat up all of these admissions officers as they visit our school and visit our kids. And we're constantly asking them questions about what they're looking for in the review process, what they see coming ahead when it comes to test optional. And again, most of them would like to stay test optional, but we are starting to see more and more of them come out now and saying that they will go back to test required. And then, you know, the Common Application has made it very easy for students to apply to multiple schools. The cumulative effect of test optional and Common App means these admissions offices are seeing a lot more applications. Here's our, I went back five years, so you can take a look at the class profiles. Some of the information I had in separate slides, some new information is here. I'm going to let that sit for a minute and see if anything jumps out at you. As you make your way down the chart, you can see there's a lot of consistency on the top half, starting with this class size. Five years ago, we graduated 409 students, and last year, we graduated 409 students. Their GPA, PSAT, SAT, ACT scores were pretty consistent. Then you get down to the number of college applications submitted, and you see over a 40% increase. So 409 students submitted 3,100 applications in 2019. 409 students submitted 5,233 applications in 2023. That has a negative inverse effect when you look at our acceptance rate, right? So more applicants, lesser accepted. So our application, our percentage of acceptiveness, you can see a decrease there. It's just that. The average number of applications per student, you see here, while we recommend 10 as a sweet spot, you'll see most of our students are going well beyond, and that can be attributed to the unpredictable results that we're seeing every spring, over the last two years. So you'll see 40% of our students submit more than 16 applications. It's a lot. You're busy. That, again, has a negative impact on our acceptance rate. On the left, you'll see those three bars. That is taking a look at how we did from an acceptance standpoint on the top 10 colleges we applied to, and on the right, the top 20 colleges we applied to. And again, you'll see a drop there merely because of the increased number of applications. This was fun to figure out. So the class of 2023, the top 20 schools we applied to, I mean, like I said, this is awesome. We just spent hours of digging and asking questions and finding out. This data really comes to us from Naviance. We feel it's really reliable data because before the kids leave us in the spring, we really have them update their Naviance profiles for us to let us know not just where you applied, where you got accepted, but also where you enrolled. So we, Montgomery High School, we care a lot about that first time. So we sorted this by where we are most frequently applying to. The next column you can see is the total number of accepted. That's important for us. We care about our percent rate. We also care about where the kids go. The colleges care about the column all the way to the right, the yield. That's how they ensure financial stability and prestige. They care about yield. If they send out 1,000 acceptances, they want to see 1,000 enrollments come from. Then I broke it down to show, just to sort it a different way, and let's look at where we are. So that previous slide was sorted primarily by, it had all the information, but we ranked it by where we were applying to most. This is where we are attending most. So a couple of different schools pop up when you do this list. Number three on there is Raritan Valley. I think that's pretty awesome. We have 37 kids at Raritan Valley right now. We're seeing that two-year option being unpopular. We think it has to do with budgetary reasons. We think it has to do with students thinking gap year wise. We think geography has something to do with it. And also, while the college landscape is settling down, people are seeing RBCC as a viable option. Also, cooking University of Pittsburgh climbed in the charts, like really trending for the Montgomery High School kid. Point out Ms. Herman, she sends money to the University of Pittsburgh. So we're seeing schools like Pitt, Indiana, you'll see up there, Purdue, those are schools that tend to have strong business schools, engineering programs, and they do offer some significant financial packages for out-of-state students. I thought it'd be interesting to take a look at our home state and just see the impact of the College App and Test Optional on Rutgers. So Rutgers is our home away-from-home for the Montgomery student. 68,000 applications last year. That's a 60% increase in one month. 60% increase. So we are unfortunately seeing some of our students who would traditionally have been slam junk at Rutgers be waitlisted and deferred, or, you know, just has to do with the shared number of applicants. I'm going to end with this, some new things from Montgomery High School. So next year, we will be launching our concurrent enrollment program. We have partnered with Seaton Hall Project Acceleration. So we will be running six courses next year at Montgomery High School where students can choose to take it for concurrent enrollment. They can earn college credit from Seaton Hall by sitting in their Montgomery High School class. So we're excited about that launch next year. We have a new school counseling website in the vein of better communication. We need consolidated information, organized information, added information, so we hope that that has become a more useful, user-friendly resource for our students and our families. We've just taken on Parchment as a platform that we use in conjunction with Naviance. It's a much easier way for students to receive credentials, transcripts, diplomas. Next year, I'm really proud to say it will be the first year that all juniors will be expected to take the PSAT, and Montgomery is going to be funding that. So in previous years, it has been a Saturday option for juniors to come and attend and take the PSAT. Last year, we did do it in-school. We saw an increased number of test takers, and again, that was on our own dime. Next year, we will be paying for all juniors to take the PSAT. And New Jersey has blessed us with another graduation requirement, which is the FAFSA. So the FAFSA will be a graduation requirement, whether or not you attend college as a post-secondary option. You will be required to contribute to FAFSA as part of your graduation requirements. So that's going to be interesting to see how that plays on our counseling department as we try to make sure that we hold A's and regular one that we need to, to make sure they complete that document. And that's where we are. So thank you for your attention. I suppose we'll open up some questions.
Cory, thank you very much for that presentation. Can you tell the board and the community what you're hearing from admissions counselors in regards to Montgomery students?
Yeah, well, I'm glad you asked that. So first and foremost, they love the Montgomery High School student. So they are very familiar with the Montgomery High School profile. That's something that's on our website. You know, a lot of the information you saw here tonight is on the high school profile, and that's how they, that's how they handle apples and oranges. So they know a GPA at Montgomery High School is different than a GPA at a neighboring high school because of the high school profile. So they really look at that profile. They know that we have a strong academic program, we have strong students. They like the Montgomery High School students because the Montgomery High School students stick and finish. So this is anecdotal. They're not sharing data with me, but this is things that they're telling us, and they contribute to campus. So those are three big reasons that they love the Montgomery High School student. I can tell you my last loop through the guidance office back in 2010, when I was a vice principal at Montgomery High School, supervising the guidance department. We had 15 to 20 colleges come to visit Montgomery High School, and I had to call them. Our superintendent at the time was Earl Kim, and he said, "Your job is to put Montgomery on the map, make sure they know who we are." We were just that school between Princeton and South Princeton. And in the last 10 years, things have changed. So we didn't call a single school. 80 of them descended upon us. And so that says a lot. It's a real tribute to our students and our families in this country.
Board members, any other questions?
Is this thing on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we take a big three-lab fairly much, and we are a very good school. We have really good academics. But I'd also like to congratulate the parents here.
For sure.
Really drive that kids.
For sure.
Think they have a lot to do with this.
Absolutely. We're just their partner.
I have a few questions, Cory. One is, you mentioned that there's a significant percentage of our students going to college. Do we know, 88%, I think you mentioned, to a four-year institution? Do we track? Because you even mentioned when Patrick asked about how many colleges are interested in us. Wouldn't it be, would be great if we could track how many of them complete their four-year degrees?
It would be fantastic. Yeah, we were having... It would be fantastic. Yeah, we were having this conversation. I would love to dig into that a little bit more. I don't have that for me, but I think that's the real tell of success. It's one thing to get in, it's another thing to finish.
Exactly. And then the second question on the AP tests. We have a lot of AP tests being taken. Do we know the percentage of actually getting the passing score on the AP tests for our school?
We do, we do. That's on our high school profile. I actually have some hard copies I can get you. So colleges are looking for fives and fours, but more and more are accepting threes. Five being the highest. The fours and fives are usually automatic awarded college credit, but more and more are looking at threes as an acceptable number.
Yeah, if you could share that.
Yeah, for sure.
Corey, could you actually just share with the board and with the public a little bit about some of the new initiatives with Seton Hall? I know it wasn't necessarily in here, but I think that that also speaks to, you know, the caliber of student and faculty and what we're able to do with our college balance.
Yeah, yeah, it was just a mention in here, but there was a whole lot of information in here. So I will say that Heather Pino and the high school team and Corey Gaylord, my predecessor, started the journey last year researching how, what schools would make sense for us to partner with for concurrent enrollment. Concurrent enrollment is an awesome advantage for our students, right? Financially, they can have more than a semester's worth of courses, paid for at half the price. It also looks really good on a transcript in a resume. So our students could be submitting their Montgomery High School transcript and a Seton Hall transcript wherever they're applying to. So there's benefits there. It's a pretty arduous process to get approval. So you have to number one, get your course curriculum approved and the instructor has to be approved by the university. So we thought oral language was a good place to start as a lot of our students would like to take care of that world language requirement before going to college. And we have an English course. We have honors level English courses. We made a choice not to start with our AP courses because students can already earn credit by taking the AP test. So we wanted kids who weren't in the AP track to have an opportunity and then we'll look to grow. You know, we do hope to grow, but we wanted a good entry point. So it was several months of submitting documents, submitting credentials for instructors before we finally received approval. And Seton Hall, we thought was where we wanted to be. Their credit seemed to be more widely accepted by colleges around the country than some of the other schools we were looking at. So that's why we landed with Seton Hall.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you planning on adding a third university in that type of program where we partner with them for credits?
If there's an advantage. So the advantage might be Seton Hall might not recognize a course that we submit for concurrent enrollment credit or dual enrollment credit, but Raritan Valley might, or St. John's might, or BYU might. So that would be, for that reason, we would definitely entertain partnering with some other schools.
I would recommend Raritan Valley because my son decided to take some summer courses and University of Pittsburgh takes, you know, credits Raritan Valley courses. So I wish that he did that instead of going straight to Pittsburgh because of the class, but that's a good partnership as well.
Yep, so we are.
I just met with the lady, Corey, I just met with them recently and I was gonna link you and I up with them. So the history with Seton Hall, it was the day before we closed the world for COVID. Corey Gaylord and I met with the lady from Seton Hall and I remember it was like we were so, oh, we're gonna do all this and then the next day switch everything to set shut off. So I'm so glad that we were able to get it going and fly.
It is, it is. And Mary, your daughter, has benefited from a program like this. So it's why, you know, many high schools do partner with schools. There's two different terms used, dual enrollment or concurrent enrollment. Often they're used interchangeably. But those who choose to delineate or create a difference. Dual enrollment often refers to this high school student sitting in the college classroom. So the high school student going to Raritan Valley to take the course. That is dual enrollment. Concurrent enrollment usually refers to the high school classroom being the learning center and the college accepting the high school course. Sometimes you have to tweak your curriculum and things like that to make it all match up. Seton Hall seemed to be, like I said, it was a good fit for us this year.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. On the earlier slides where you show at least on the standardized test performance of the students and their comparison to the state. And that's all the public school district students, consolidation, right, their average on the standardized test. What about, I know community members have attended town halls and previous meetings acquiring how showing those comparisons with like districts to Montgomery and like inserting that feature on that slide. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, the numbers in there include, that is not, that's just how our students do against other students, not our district against other districts. So that is, if you went to the Hun School, your SAT scores would be mixed in in that blue column and that gold column. So, but that would be interesting to see how we do compared to other districts, like districts, you know, kind of narrow the scope a little bit. I think we should feel pretty good about if we just looked at the state comparison and then really, when you're talking about SAT and college score, you're talking global comparisons.
Any other questions for board members?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Because Dan Ernino and Tony Dorsett, University of Pitt produced those two amazing guests.
The last presentation for this evening. Trent, our business administrator, will present all the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budgets.
All right, I'm gonna stay in my seat since I already have my phone and I control my computer. First off, I wanna say thank you to the board members. I got to meet one-on-one. That was very helpful for me. There was, you know, good feedback, which is reflected in the budget. So that was very beneficial. I'll start with the process that goes on to make the budget, which if you don't remember, you were given a budget calendar I don't even know how, five or six months ago. It's an ongoing process. Even after the budget is finally, we go through the year in April, or it's probably will be starting back again in April as we start the, or main June as we start the orders for the next year. So in October, administration gave the budget managers, so think of different departments, thinking different principals of the budget development process. December, we took all the requests in. We met with everybody one-on-one. It was a good time to be able to hear everybody's feedback, their goals, what they wanted, what they were willing to take away. Have open conversations. We took those open conversations and went into January, February and developed the budget as an administrative team. February twenty-ninth, we received our state aid numbers, which is key in formulating the budget because even though you think at this point, we would all know, it's still sometimes a mystery. Probably gonna lose money, but luckily we gained six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which is very beneficial to us. March first, met with the OFF meeting, just about the budget, had a good conversations there. And then March nineteenth, which is the current date, we are talking right now about the tentative budget. All right, just remember it's the tentative. We still have some time to go until April when we have the public hearing and everything. And the hope is, and we have to, so we'll be here if we don't, we have to adopt the tentative budget tonight because it has to be submitted to the executive county superintendent tomorrow for approval. And then in April, our board meeting, then April thirtieth, they give us a date range. That's why the meeting is later in April. It's not April twenty-third. We're gonna do it on that date so we can adopt the final budget and start moving forward to the next budget. So that's the explanation. So looking at some of the numbers, so starting point for the tax levy was eighty-seven million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. That was last year's tax levy. I think at this point, we all have it drilled in our heads that the max we can increase is two percent. So two percent would be an extra one point six nine million. We were also offered, if we wanted to, by the state, an increase for healthcare costs, which would be an extra six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That's when you have extraordinary increases in your benefits. This year, our benefits increase in cost by about one point four million. We were given a max tax levy, but after discussions with the board. And what we're hoping to approve tonight is staying within the two percent raise, so not doing the six hundred and twenty-four thousand. Even if the eighty-nine thousand, or eighty-nine million, sorry, four hundred and two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. So does anybody have questions about that specific slide? So what we're going forward with is the two percent raise.
Just one other. I just want to thank the business administrator and superintendent for the very hard work because I know how difficult the budget was, so I do appreciate that we were able to keep the increase at two percent. We really, really appreciate it.
Of course, and it sets us up in the future to be able to look at other raises as well, even when we're constantly freezing. Yes?
So you would be not taking any of the healthcare adjustment perhaps?
Mm-hmm.
What's the principal want?
Well, that would add to the tax levy. And the feedback I received by enough of the board, just from my one-on-one conversations, indicated that if we raised the tax levy to, the max it could be is two point seven percent, that this budget would not be built on properly.
So in lieu of that adjustment, what is going to need to be adjusted somewhere else?
Sure, so we just made the decision, if the board members remember, I have it, I think later on when we talk about it. Now, last year, there's something called a budgeted fund balance. Budgeted fund balance that was used last year was five point four million. We had come up with a goal as a district to get down to three point eight million. That's where we were initially trying to cut to. By not raising the taxes, we were cutting down to four point two. So we still achieved the goal of cutting the fund balance by one point two million, which sets us up to, you know, have more savings and more surplus going forward. It just was not the three point eight that we originally talked about. And that was, you know, with the auditor, we had discussions and everything. However, in order to, the decision was made in order to maintain programs, maintain staffing. That became more important to us than cutting that just to get down to the three point eight. So, and we did a good job, I think, as a district of getting down to one point two million. So you're gonna watch every other district look at their user front of the budget, their problem go up under fund balance, and we were able to get it, you know, cut, so.
And then year over year, we'll be able to continue to increase that until we get to one point four?
Yes, that, as the auditor mentioned, we, you know, we do budget in a way and we do spend, you know, conservatively, that we do end up with more money every year than what we spent. That's always the goal, so that can help build. But we have a healthy cap reserve right now. Our main reserve is about three million. We can have a max five point four based on our district's evaluation. So we're healthy with where we're at with that. So that was, that was the decision that was made. And that's what we're proposing to go with. So on the agenda tonight, I'm gonna break this down a few different ways. This is how it's broken down on the agenda of how we improve the funds. So first is the general fund that has the tax levy, that has state aid in it, that has lots of other different little things down to we have sold scrap metal and made money off of that. But that's not a lot. But we have preschool tuition, we get funds from E-Rates. I don't know if you know what E-Rate is, but all those little numbers on the bottom of your cell phone bills and everything, we get that back. We count that as revenue. We get solar rebates. So that all goes into the general fund. The special revenue fund would be what we look at with grants. And that decreased significantly for a very good reason and that's that Esser grants are now going. So we could not count, last year there was one point eight million counted as Esser. What if we don't have? That's okay. I mean, it was allocated for, you know, one-off purchases. We had put it into recurrent staffs that actually hurt us. It just makes the budget look shorter than it was. And debt service fund, the district, I think, has five, or sorry, four bonds and one other debt. Some will be falling off in a bit. I know one's from two thousand and seven, two thousand and ten. Those are pre-merger debts, so they have some after that. But the total debt service we need this year is seven million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, which goes into the tax levy. I'll refer to that just a bit. Most of it goes into the tax levy. We do get some aid from the state for that, which is seen right here. So the local taxes, as we talked about, are gonna go over two percent. Also in those taxes, it does debt service, which it makes sense if we're paying our debt down, it is reduced this year. State aid went up six hundred and eighty-five thousand. I don't know why I have the plus or minus, it's the same number. That's obviously wrong. But it did go up six hundred and eighty-five thousand. The debt service we are receiving from the state is five hundred and ninety-seven thousand. There's a formula in the state. We don't have any thing to do with that at all. We just log into something. It's called the debt service data collection website. And you can see what we're getting from the state. In the reserves, as I said, we're using the four point two fund balance. That's what that number was that we had talked about, three point eight. That last year was five point four, so this year it's four point two. We're moving seven hundred and fourteen thousand from capital into projects for the district. Because again, as the auditor was speaking about, we do have the ability to do that because we are luckily returning more money now from putting out. And then maintenance as well, we can move from the maintenance reserve. One of the reasons you move from the maintenance reserve is unlike cap reserve, there's a four percent of your total district valuation that you can have in maintenance reserve. And we have been saving diligently as a district this year, so now we have to make sure we do move it into the general fund. And that's just a pretty chart to see how everything's spent. Most of the funds are local taxes. You can see the reserves that we have in the state aid, but again, most money in any school district is gonna come from local taxes. All right, so the next, you can take a time, you can scroll, you can look down and see if you look at everything. I mean, obviously there's gonna be fluctuations here and there. The one is the, you know, the minus seventy percent in the grants, which is expected because of the Esser funds. So even though that number looks scary, it's not. It was expected. The big, let's see. You can see we kept, and we did it, I think, it was a good job by the district to keep. Most things pretty even, you know, I mean, you can see regular instruction went up three percent, specialty goes down three percent. Operation means that the plant goes up two percent, transportation goes down. So we really worked through, as I spoke with the board members who I met with, you know, we had four years of data that we looked at. Understanding that one of those years was recovery from COVID, basically too. But we looked at four years of data, what was spent on top of everybody's solid opinion, and we really put together a budget that reflects what is new by the district. Are there any questions with this page?
Sorry, can I just ask, what's the difference between regular instruction and tuition?
Tuition is what we pay for students to attend schools outside of our school.
Got it. Thank you.
And then there's a pretty chart to look at again, but the main thing to take away, you can see the employee benefits down there at the bottom. Twenty percent of our budget goes to employee benefits. Everything else is kind of what you would expect to see on this chart, that the regular structure is the most, specialty comes after that. You know, we're operating the buildings, we have the support services, but whatever, I can go back to this, but it really comes down to is that our expenses are driven mainly by people. Sixty-one and a half percent this year go to salaries, twenty-one point three percent go to benefits, so you get to point eight percent total of our budget is people. So that's the biggest, biggest thing we're in. And that's the toughest part when it comes down to, if you need to make decisions, people make up the most. So that's what you always want to try to save as a district. But those are the biggest drivers that we have. That formatting is off. I went from power to slides and apparently it didn't go well, so. We were able to add some new positions. There's paraphernalia being added. There's a transportation nurse which we had to add. If we didn't have that, we'd be paying for a service out. And it was cheaper for the district to have that person in-house rather than paying for the service out. Adding another computer tech, obviously. Technology's the way of the world now, so it's always gonna be like that. You're gonna keep adding technicians. The STAR program, two psychologists are being added into that program. ESS program does not exist anymore. It dud, it wobbled into this program. So it's actually a savings for the district to do this. Even though it looks like we're adding the personnel, we have a savings. And you can see there's the BCVA teacher, autism teacher, and then two new safety and security coordinators. Because again, the way the world is right now, it's important to have as much support when it comes to security at the campus. Wow, really not go well. Okay, so I talked about the projects. We budgeted and it's kind of, we've spoken with the principals, but just money for security improvements, that's kind of TBD. But we're always looking to ensure the schools are as secure as possible. Looking at playground equipment upgrades, looking at an updated sign in front of the high school. high school. We have started talking about, it's either new or upgraded facility, transportation facilities, we started those conversations. And the big thing that has to be remembered when we talk about projects, we still have the rod grants. So the rod grants exist, they're approved, we're in talks with the architect right now, he's starting the design process. For us, we have the upper middle school, there's a chiller replacement, the upper middle school is also a roof replacement, lower middle school's an HVAC unit, and then high school's RCU replacement, a rooftop unit replacement. So we have those four different projects, so I mean, we can, we can move things, and say we're going to spend, we have $8 million on cap reserve, but it's all kind of designated right now, so you have to remember that when looking at the budget, the rod grants are going to really drive what we're doing the next couple of years to get those projects done. Also, you have to remember that the state's paying, you know, for a good percentage of those, and that's why we have to use those. It's, it's, you know, you'd be crazy not to use the rod grants. So, do you have any questions?
I have one question. Those rod grants, can you explain one more time, like, how they operate? Because it seems like we do have to have certain amount in our budget, in our reserves, and then once we take the project, certain portion, we have to fund ourselves, or the state helps us to find, to fund the remainder. What's the percentage that we would need to have?
So we're responsible for 60%, the state will do 40%. There was different, the minimum would have been 40, we got the 40, other districts may have gotten more, but yeah, so we have the opportunity to get the, these, you know, necessities of the plant facility for, you know, 60% of the price, but that's how it works. And then there's different phases, so the state will pay for part of the design phase. So even if we do the design phase, and we choose not to go for it, which we're not going to do, the state will still pay us for that part. So they give us, there's milestones along the way that they reimburse us, so.
So that they can do the capital reserve, wasn't really smart enough there.
These projects are necessary projects, so. Is there a question, board members? Thank you, Mr. Trent.
I just want to reiterate that the importance and the appreciation that Mr. Trent offered to meet with every single board member individually, for us to make sure we understood the budget, so I really want to thank Mr. Trent in public again, because I think that's obviously a huge part of our responsibility, so thank you for taking the time to meet with us individually.
Do you have a question? Thank you, Mr. Trent. At this time, I entertain a motion to reconvene in executive session.
So.
Second. You're probably moving second, although the favor is state aye.
Aye.
It's members of the public, we expect to be in there no longer than 30 to 45 minutes. It's now 9:25, we will convene, entertain a motion to reconvene, open session.
So.
Second, second, probably moving second, although the favor is state aye. Aye. Committee representative reports, MTEA. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Adam Hackel, I am a music teacher here at Orchard Hill. I also teach at Village, the upper middle school, and have assisted in the marching band for many years. This evening, I am representing Jim Dolan as the representative for the MTEA. Good evening, members of the board, community members, district administration, and MTEA colleagues. We had a very successful Read Across America week with almost 60 guest readers across Village Elementary School and Orchard Hill. They included administrators from our district, office staff, community members from Montgomery, MTEA leadership, local politicians, and our very own Board of Education members. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you for making Read Across America a wonderful success, and the students truly love to have stars come and read to them, and that's really what you are when you come out there. They will talk about you for days. Our Read Across America virtual read aloud with teenage author Sansu Lukuma was well-attended. The Village Elementary and Orchard Elementary Schools attendees enjoyed the story and had great questions for the author about the illustrations, how she got started writing, and the inspiration she took to create her works. Once the books come in, each attendee will receive a copy. Also, in honor of Women's History Month, our Equity Committee started a collection to support the organization I Support the Girls. It is a nonprofit that collects and distributes essential items to support women and, excuse me, and the drive will run until the end of March. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any board member delegate representative reports?
Yes.
Board member Spencer Wells.
Yes. So thank you, board chair. So last evening, March 18th, 2024, Patrick Todd, Joanna Fila, Honorable Lekka Jernigan, and I attended the Somerset County School Boards Association's annual Unsum Heroes Award Ceremony at the Somerset County Vocational Technical High School in Bridgewater, New Jersey. The ceremony began at 6:30 PM. All Somerset County Boards of Education members, superintendents, business administrators, principals, and district staff were invited to attend. All public school districts in Somerset County were invited several months ago to collaborate with internal teams and submit the name of one high school senior to be recognized. The concept around unsum is to honor those students who are often overlooked under more traditional award guidelines. The selection criteria include students who've overcome difficult academic or personal challenges, model good citizenship, or exhibit a spirit and quiet strength that inspires others. It was so enjoyable to watch each student honoring on the stage last night. All the talented students last night represented achieving academic success despite disabilities or language barriers, family health issues, one prioritizes social activism and theater, another expressed biomedical and engineering interest, and all were intelligent, compassionate people who will make a positive impact in this world. I had the pleasure to meet two district superintendents that were present, and several Board of Education members as well, with one superintendent stating, "It's nice to show up with the good stuff like this." Please join me in congratulating our own Montgomery High School senior Cameron Bennett on being our district's amazing unsum hero. Thank you. So Principal Pino Beatty did an excellent job orchestrating just how amazing, thoughtful, smart, and impressive Cameron is. After speaking with Cameron and her parents last night, she is an outstanding mentor and role model for her siblings and high school peers. She is looking forward to attending an institute of technology in the fall, like her parents. I'd also like to thank all Montgomery Township Board of Education members for donating money so that each unsum hero was gifted with her certificate and gift card last night. This concludes my SCSBA report. Do board members have any questions or comments at this time?
All right, no, thank you.
And then finally, I'll just wrap up really quickly and thank Miss Stacy Anderson and the MTEA for organizing the Read Across America, and had the pleasure of reading a book to a first grade class at Orchard Hill, and the book was Stacy's Remarkable Books, and the students were highly, first graders, were highly engaged, they asked amazing, amazing, you know, thought-provoking questions, you know, they certainly know how to, you know, code, decode, comprehend, and I was just thoroughly, thoroughly impressed. So Mrs. Kesters, excuse me, Mrs. Kesters' class, and that, that book is a part of her library, so shout out to Ms. Kester and her amazing class of students.
Thank you. Any other board member delegate representative reports tonight?
I have a quick one. I attended the Municipal Alliance and Youth Service Commission meeting, and on May 2nd will be the annual Mental Health Matters event that is a partnership with the school district, and it's going to be held at UMS, May 2nd UMS, and the topic for this year is the effects of social media and cell phones on mental health.
Any other reports? All right, here are none, moving to board committee reports. First up, Assessment, Curriculum, and Instruction Committee. Board member Dowling.
I didn't realize I was the first one, sorry. Okay, I'll keep it very brief. The majority of our meeting, which was held on March, sorry, I don't have the date here, in mid-March, I'll find the date for you in a second, the majority of, March 19th. The majority of the meeting was revolving around the portrait of a graduate presentation, which Mr. Delgado did a wonderful job on this evening. The committee provided some feedback for him, and he did, he made a couple of tweaks, but for the most part, we were just entertaining his wonderful presentation and getting ready for that. Upcoming test-taking dates were reviewed by Dr. Young for the NJGPA. They'll take place in March, March 11th for ELA, and March 12th for the mathematics, and the makeup dates are set for Thursday, March 14th, and Friday, March 15th. Beyond the school day update was also given by Dr. Young. We offer an additional targeted support in ELA and in math after school for students in grades five through eight who demonstrate a specific need. 250 students plus are invited to participate, and approximately 75 students actually accepted the, accepted to participate. The program starts the week of March 11th and runs through May 3rd. And finally, we were given a follow-up by Jeff Brooks on staff cybersecurity. Mr. Brooks visited LMS, VES, and MHS faculty meetings on Monday, March 4th to review training videos and introduce upcoming phishing campaigns. He will visit OHES and UMS on Monday, March 18th. Any questions?
No, thank you, board member Dowling. Up next, Operations, Facilities, and Finance Committee, board member Fila.
So the Operations, Finance, and Facilities Committee met on Friday, March 15th. The focus of the whole committee this month was the budget review. The business administrator and the superintendent have been working very hard to evaluate needs of our district and allocate the funds available to provide the quality education to our students and to ensure our district offers quality work environment. We reviewed several versions of the budget proposal and discussed in great detail the needs of each school in our district. We focused on the quality of the programs we offer, maintenance needs of our facilities, employment conditions, and fiscal responsibility we have to the taxpayers. With the rising prices and payroll costs, it's unrealistic to avoid 2% statutory tax increase. However, we worked very hard to cap the increase at 2% because we understood that higher tax increases imposed in the past two years created a big tax burden on our residents. In anticipation of the cost, in anticipation of the cost to increase, we have discussed ideas for new sources of funding to plan for the future years and establish a healthy balance between the tax levy, grants, state aid, and other sources of funding. The committee also discussed the plans for future, for, discussed the plans for capital improvements and maintenance of the school grounds and facilities. We talked about the challenges the administration faces to address a roof leakage at high school. In order to properly repair the roof, we have to take the sole panels off the roof. Unfortunately, the district cannot remove the panels for another year and a half. So the administration is working on temporary solution to address the leaks to prevent our facilities from permanent damage. The administration also took action to evaluate the needs of facilities used by the grounds, maintenance, and the transportation employees. Our district takes pride in creating a quality work environment to all employees. I appreciate the hearing about the plans considered by the business administrator and the superintendent to bring the teams together in the facilities where they could have their department meetings, trainings, and break room.
Any questions, board members? There are none, moving on to Policy and Communications Committee, board members, Lekka Jernigan and Spencer Wells.
Ms. Wells, would you like?
Go first.
Okay, from the policy perspective, there's a couple of items that hopefully we'll get through tonight. So over the last few months, we've all discussed the potential of us doing a policy review. One of the things that I've shared with the board last month was a board certificate, certification recognition of a full board commitment to effective governance and continuous improvement through training, and some of those areas include ethics, goal-setting, board roles and responsibilities, and areas of policy development. And I think one of the items that is on the list of those certification, of the recognition of the certification, is the wellness check of our policies. So over the last month, Mary has been kind enough of communicating with Strauss Esme for a potential review of policies, and I had a pleasure of interviewing the presenter from last month from NJASBA, and the good news is that NJASBA's wellness check is free of charge, is actually part of our membership. So today, after we're done, I would like to make sure that we vote and all agree that the wellness check is the path we want to take. Obviously, this is not going to be overnight. I know there's a list of school districts that are, you know, ready to do the wellness check, so that's one area that I would like for us to agree on today. In addition to that, we reviewed some of the policies presented to us, to Strauss Esme, and I cannot stress enough, and this is, you know, I actually have a life example why I think it's really critical for us to do review of the policies and kind of check where we are from the perspective of law mandate and our personal, or our school particularly associated with school policy. The bilingual education policy that we had on the agenda for the initial review actually specified language that referenced wrong timeframes and was contradictory to the state law, and that was actually highlighted later on as I was having discussion with other board members throughout the school districts around this particular policy. So I will be bringing this up again during our next policy meeting. There's a way for us as board members to make changes to the policy to reflect accuracy. But this stresses really what we've all been talking about in regards to having a good understanding of our policies within the school district, making sure that all of them are well-reflected based on the laws that we have today in New Jersey. So with that said, I would like to, if this is appropriate time, Patrick, to make a motion to vote on the wellness check, because I would like to get us on, on the list of all of those school districts to make sure that we are, you know, not wasting any more time in regards to NJASBA providing that service to us.
Can I ask a question?
At the closing, at the end, yeah.
Can I ask a question? So if you're on the list, you know how bad that will be?
I think, yeah, I think they, that what I've heard from other school districts, it's about two months before they get to us, right? So at least, you know, if we keep waiting a month up, it's going to be three months and four months, and I can tell you that based on some of the sessions I'm having, is that a lot of school districts are going through it, and I think this particular policy I just mentioned is driving a lot of that behavior, because there's some issues, potentially, potential issues, those sort of issues if we don't have these replacements accurately. So we'll do that at the end. Great, thank you so much.
Sorry, I'm just to clarify.
Sorry, I'm just, to clarify, we can just do the wellness check.
Yes, just the, it's part of our, it's a costly one.
Got it.
So, it'd be part of our NJASBA membership. No additional cost to the district.
Could you elaborate on what it is that you're seeing as a, or hearing as a concern in the bilingual policy in, you know, as an extension of what's already here that should be modified?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. I actually have it written directly, I'm happy to text it to you. I mean, it's, it's in reflection to the language that is being reflected in the policy today, states of policy from 1974, which talks about three to four-year, I think, timeline for ESL student to get fully integrated into the system where today's policy is, or today's, I don't know, state law.
Statute?
Yeah, the statute talks about potentially four or five years, so it actually directly contradicts itself. So, we can fix it, right? So, at our next meeting, because I have this information, we'll adjust it in our policy to reflect it accurately and remove the old stat, all, all, all legal language that talks about something that occurred way back.
So, just to be, I just want to make sure that it's, as far as English language learners or MLs, they have to take access testing every year and get leveled, usually one through five, and yes, beyond that, then you'd be graduated out.
Right.
You could not necessarily mean all five years, so that, I'm, I'm curious as to how the language is, is, yeah, and it's, I mean, what's to say that if a child is receiving ESL services for two to three years and then they take their access test and are, are doing just fine, that they wouldn't be required to have these services?
Yeah, and I'll actually send you a direct letter from another attorney to Strauss Esme to ask them for, you know, clarification. And Mary, yeah, I'll send it to you. And I think Mary and I are going to have the same discussion with Strauss Esme in regards to wellness check, right? So, when I talk about wellness check, right, we should, we should see both sides of the story, right? So, I think it would be feasible for us to see Strauss Esme, it's part of, and I send you guys the, the comparison on, between the two as far as cost, but it is part of our contract that we've received from Mary, so.
So, we're already paying for the service that they haven't done for us?
Correct. Well, they call it something different than, than wellness check, right? So, it's an audit, right? So, but I think we should do both, I mean, we have access to it right now, yeah. Sounds good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So, thank you, Board Member Will Akadurgen, Board Chair. So, as the co-chair of PCC, the communications part, Superintendent Mary McGlaughlin is our district co-pilot in that effort. So, as a follow-up to a community member's public comment at last month's meeting, all three strategic planning meetings have taken place. The information for all the meetings is posted on the district website. The strategic planning committee has met to set the goals for the district as stated by our superintendent. Next, the administrators had staff heart meeting, is that correct, Mary? To develop objectives, and Mary will work when necessary, continue to work with the New Jersey School Boards facilitator, Gwen Thornton, to determine further steps. So, after the strategic plan outcomes are categorized and finalized, a survey will be created to be sent out to the community. Our communication specialist, Ryan, is researching different types of surveys to determine the one that will collect the best results for the district. And some areas of interest for the survey are determining the best mode of communication for parents, whether it's social media, website, emails from the principals, et cetera, and transparency. So, at this month's PCC meeting, which was held on March, Thursday, March 7th, Mary did present several companies that have expertise in writing the questions that elicit the more targeted responses to the questions. And we are looking for high rates of reliability, whether the results can be reproduced under the same conditions, as well as validity, whether the results represent what they are supposed to measure. All the companies provide the service we're looking for, including distributing the survey and calculating the results. The company that shared the most interest among committee members was the National School Public Relation Association and SPO, with the former enveloping a K-12 insight. Various pricing among the companies is involved and exact pricing is yet to be determined. And again, Mary and Ryan will follow up. They are following up, actually, and they'll present their findings at the April PCC meeting. Conversely, and the district has an annual subscription to Survey Monkey, which is a service that can help us create a survey through AI. We would then send out the survey and monitor the results. The committee members requested that Mary work with Ryan to obtain further information on these key and related items, so the best choice is likely achieved. And as communication is a key area of importance, having further open communication between the community and the district is vital. It was mentioned that different districts use a tool called Let's Talk, which is the platform where two-way communication takes place. Let's Talk, I'm told, revolutionizes communication between the district and the community by making it easier for parents, students, and staff to connect and share feedback, it fosters active engagement, and empowers us with vital insights derived from the data analytics, and it opens dialogue and active listening. The Board of Education and the district are excited to explore how we enhance our communications processes moving forward. This concludes my PCC communications part report. Do board members have any questions or comments at this time?
Hi, do you have a question, Mike, after you, for Mr. McLaughlin? Has Gwen gotten back to you in the co-leading data of the strategic planning?
No, she was away at a workshop, and the audience away at a two-day workshop, so we haven't connected.
Any other questions? Here are none, moving on to.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm just like anxious about going ahead with our next steps, and so I know that they're waiting for Gwen to come back.
No, I already have a plan, it's, after going to a meeting with the building staff.
Thank you. Moving on to Human Resources Committee, and I'll keep this short. Human Resources Committee met on March 12th. Tom Wayne, Director of Safety and Security, gave updates on his hiring. New this year, we have a safety coordinator position in the building. Tom has received positive feedback from staff, administrators, and students. We still have a current posting for a safety monitor position in the high school. That position, posting is just closed, and we have currently, currently have fifteen applicants for the position, and interviews will be starting this week. All the staff at the high school now have their IDs, that double, has their access keys, entire staff will have their IDs within the next week or so. We also talked about Director of Special Services update and Supervisor of Special Education update. Still in the process of review and applications for the Director of Special Services position. Once those applicants are selected, they will be, will be holding interviews. Supervisor of Special Education is going to be paid through ESIR funds. No one applied at this time, so we extended the deadline. We had two viable candidates, but neither were determined strong enough for the position, and we most likely will be looking at someone internally. Assistant Superintendent Mattis gave us a brief overview of the workers' compensation process. And that is it, anything else?
I actually have a fact.
Yes.
So, on March 7th, our district held a job fair at Fordwood Elementary School. I attended the job fair to observe how the job fairs are conducted in our district. And I walked into the room where potential candidates were very warmly greeted by our HR team. They were offered information about the hiring process and directed to the relevant stations to meet our staff. The HR team did a great job setting up the stations to enable privacy and comfort. The candidates spent adequate time with the interviewers, and they seemed to have their questions answered to their satisfaction. When, what I noticed was that as the candidates were leaving, they walked away smiling and feeling empowered by the potential of the new opportunities. This is a great testimony of how well this job fair was organized and the great impression our staff made of the candidates. This job fair would not be possible if it wasn't for the professionalism and forward-thinking of Kelly Matthews, our HR director, and her team, Sharon Martin and Stacy O'Neil. Our HR team takes proactive actions and promotes our district by participating in various job fairs. They dedicate their time to establishing connections with the potential future candidates to bring the best talent to our district and also to mitigate the staff shortage issues. The results of Kelly's leadership and forward-looking actions are visible and appreciated when the personal agenda is presented each month at the board meetings, and the board learns about the vacancies and how quickly those vacancies are filled. I look forward to attending other job fairs to learn about how our HR team promotes our district at external job fairs.
Speaking of, the next job fair is CJ, Central Jersey Pride Job Fair on March 21st, which will be held virtually. You can see the website for additional information.
Real quick, may I say something about the HRC note? So, the supervisor in special education position, we, yes, we did, we were not successful in finding a candidate, so we're going to use the grant funds to do consultative and PD for our staff.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the February 2024 Executive Session Meeting Minutes and the 20, February 27th, 2024 Business Meeting Minutes. Can probably move in a second. Any questions on the motion? Mr. Trent, roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Belak.
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Dr. Spence-Walls.
Yes.
Ms. Will Akadurgen.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Board acknowledges all correspondents to the board. Next up, Agenda Items, Public Comment. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed at one opportunity to address the board regarding the Action Agenda Items ruling, up for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both from the Chromebook provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. Do we have any public comment for the Action Agenda? And before making your comments, make sure you let us know the Action Agenda Item number. If there are any other comments, please line up now, thank you.
I don't know which Action Agenda Item it is, but you guys were talking about the facilities buildings, transportation in general. Was that not on there?
I don't believe that's an Action Agenda Item, no.
Oh, then I don't have nothing to say because I thought that other stuff was, my mistake.
Say it properly, not in the.
In the other, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments for Action Agenda Items, going once, going twice? Public comments are clues for Action Agenda Items. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept Action Agenda Items 1.1 through 4.4. I will read 4.3 and 4.4. 4.3 says, be resolved that the Board of Education denies the appeal in HIB 25807-UMS-0122024. And 4.4 reads, be resolved that the Board of Education approves the appeal in HIB 259425-UMS-02022024. Mr. Trent, roll call please. Is there a second almost?
I just want to clarify.
Yes.
Would you mind stating you don't want the appeal that we approved, please?
Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the appeal in HIB 259425-UMS-02022024.
Okay, thank you.
Which action item is, are those? 4.3 is the denial, 4.4 is the approval. Is there a motion?
Totally, second.
It's been properly moved in second act to move to accept items 1.1 through 4.4. Are there any questions on the motion? Roll call please, Mr. Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
No on 4.3, yes, I have anything else.
I'm sorry, no on 4.3, thank you. Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Belak.
So, on item 1.1C, I think the note would be case numbers 260359, 2601117, 258864, and the case number 258070, which I believe is item 4.3.
I apologize, would you repeat yourself?
Yes, okay. So, the first case number would be 260359. Second one is 260117, 258864, and then the appeal 258070, which I believe is item 4.3, I mean, would you know?
And what was your action on those? No?
No.
No, okay, thank you. Can you ask for everything else?
Everything else, yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Franco-Herman.
Yes, everything else abstained 1.2.
All right, Ms. Harris.
Yes, everything abstained 1.2.
Dr. Spence-Walls.
Yes, abstained for 1.2 and 4.4.
Ms. Will Akadurgen.
Yes, but I do have a question in regards to 1.2. As we discussed in the policy update, I would like to reevaluate policy 2423 in our next session, so I just wanted to inform you that. As is right now, it's not acceptable in my opinion.
Well, it's at first reading.
Okay, so this is not.
So, it'll be there.
Okay.
I will collect the thing that is, 243. Ms. Vina.
Yes.
And Mr. Todd.
Yes, thank you, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Trent.
New business from the public. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed at one opportunity to bring any new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both from the Chromebook provided. from the Chromebook provided. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. No, you're good, thank you. If there's anyone else that wishes to make public comments, please start entering your name so we can hear this one.
John Mittner, 694 Millstone River Road. The only comment I have really to make is you were talking about possibly doing something, eliminating the trailer and putting something up for buildings and grounds and transportation. I think that's a great idea. One thing I'd look, since that will bring actual capital trailers around here. The building, the ECC building, is four trailers put together. It's not a solid building. That's something that you may want to look into in the future, actually bringing real capital and putting in a real building up. The other thing, you spoke about the roof leaking over at the high school and having solar panels on the roof. I think that's something the administration and school board should consider is when those solar panels come down is not to put them back up. Because if you have to take them down for any other reason, you're going to pay to take them down, and you got to put them back up. And the cost for what? I mean, if the solar panels are saving the district and they're doing great things, put them out in the park a lot like you have in the past, I think the roof is a bad idea. That's all I have to say. Have a great day.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public comments are closed. Closing discussion, issues, concerns from the board.
I just want to remind us to table a conversation on retreat dates because it's already the end of March and also the evaluation for superintendent, because it's springtime and we should do it.
Yeah, it has an open WME too, the superintendent, so, yeah, we are on that. Thank you.
And I would like to make a motion.
Please state your motion clearly.
To vote on the wellness check with NJASBA.
So. So the motion would be to.
You have to make a full, complete motion.
I would like to make a motion for the board to vote to accept our ability to have a wellness check completed with the New Jersey State Board of Education. Please, I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the board allow the New Jersey State School
Board Association to complete a wellness check for Montgomery Township School Board District Policies. Is that correct? Thank you. So can probably move in a second? Any questions on the motion? I do have one question. So currently, we are under contract with Strauss Esme, correct? And you know, how long is that contract still valid?
I think I saw 2025, I think. I'm under contract, sign the call, Michael.
Thank you. That's all right.
I, yeah, yeah. We're waiting for, it's a part of our service, so. If we cannot both of them do it at the same time, then both of our.
Trent, roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Vilek.
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Dr. Spence-Walls.
Yes.
Ms. Willa Kjeranigan.
Yes.
Ms. Sina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd. Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Trent.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting at 10:07 PM. Thank you all for your attendance. I appreciate it, thank you.